Today's school board meeting for January the 21st, 2020 is now officially called to order. We will have our pledge of allegiance by Mrs. Jane Crawford. Following our invocation will be Minister Daron Arman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
May we bow our heads in prayer?
Yes.
Father, we thank you for this day that you have made. Father, we thank you for another opportunity to come together as citizens of this community. We thank you for this school board. We thank you for all of the members. We just thank you for being so good to us. Father, we come to recognize that we are who we are. We have what we have. We are where we are because of you, God. It wasn't because of anything so great that we've done, but it was only because of your mercy and your grace. And God, for that, we thank you, Lord. We thank you for a community that recognizes that we need God. And Father, we pray for this school board as they make decisions week in and week out, God, as they go into different schools, as they lead the schools of this community. We pray for your divine wisdom and inspiration, God. We pray, God, that you would lead them and that you would guide them into all truth, Father, that you would show them exactly what we need in order to make this community the excellent community that you've called us to be, in Jesus' name. We thank you for the camaraderie among each one of them, God. We thank you for the love that only you can put inside of our hearts, God. Continue to do what only you can do among us, God, and we will forever give you the glory, the honor, and the praise. We ask this in Jesus' name. We all say, "Amen."
Amen. Thank you so much. Okay, at this time, we will have our presentations, positive behavior interventions, and supports for 2018-2019 model school Melrose Elementary.
I'd like to present a banner for model school for Melrose Elementary. Model school represents the positive behavior that they've represented through data and as far as lowering discipline issues and raising attendance. Not an easy job to collect that and submit it. We thank you very much, Sarah. I got to tell one little story to the board. As I did my walkthrough, I was interviewing one of the students, and part of the policy is they can echo the sentiments of the school policy and procedures. And they did superhero last year, right? I'm not sure if you're doing it this year. And part of it is to be incredible. And I thought that was pretty tremendous. And so I asked, I said, "So are you incredible?" And she goes, "Well, I don't think so, but my mother says I'm incredible." Congratulations, Melrose.
We also need to introduce everyone, too, for the record.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Mr. Stevens? Introduce yourself, too, while you're there.
Okay. I work in student services. My name is Michael Stevens. And Leah Lundee is the illustrious principal at Melrose and her wonderful guidance counselor, Sarah Byder.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
That's my first, and here's your answer. Melrose.
Put that on your fence.
I like that, yeah.
No. David.
Well, I thought it was a good idea. I think it's great. What an idea. I was being happy. That is wonderful.
Excuse me. And again, we commend Melrose Elementary and the student body and the staff. Thank you for your work. At this time, we will have recognition of Mr. John Brantley, the bus driver, by Mr. Thomas Bowling.
And Ms. Sharon Spill.
All right. Is Sharon here? Oh, yes, she's back.
There she is.
She thought she was going to get out of it.
She tried. What did I say, Ms. Bell? It goes with the title and the paycheck? Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
It's not every day that I get the type of phone call that I got a couple of weeks ago. Typically, when I get a phone call, it's for bad news. People are upset about something, and that's pretty much the life of support services. For example, I didn't get the first phone call this morning, and somebody says, "Man, I'm glad those boilers fired right up this morning because it was nice and warm in that classroom." Or, "Man, that bus was on time this morning, and we were glad because it was nippy outside." No, we get the opposite phone calls. When things don't go well, then the internet isn't working, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. However, sometimes someone does something that's so extraordinary that it calls for regular citizens to pick up the phone and say, "You know what? Your guy did such a great job taking care of my kid. Somebody need to hear about it." So on this particular day, Mr. Brantley and I, I'm going to tell you a story for you. I wasn't there, but I heard it from the parent, and it went a little bit like this. Their kid was attacked at the bus stop by a dog. You jumped off of your bus, took care of that kid, separated the kid from the dog, took that kid to his parents, and then called back later that evening just to make sure that that child was okay. And you know, you just don't get that type of service every day, you know, typically from a bus driver, so.
I called him up another day later on.
Yes, sir.
He's always been good as gold.
Well, he really is. And we thank you for what you do every day. But on this day, it was truly extraordinary, and we want you to know how much we appreciate you as a district. So I have a lit certificate, and I have a gift card, just, you know, as a token of our appreciation. And the certificate says, "In appreciation for your service and commitment to the children who ride your bus, you have gone above and beyond the typical duties assigned when you intervene and defend a child against a dog attack. Your bravery and quick thinking prevented a potentially tragic circumstance. We are extremely grateful and honored to have you as an employee, and we're all honored by your presence today, sir, and we're all very impressed with you, and we thank you."
Let's get a photo. Also, I want to point out Mr. Brantley's mother is here, who I had a long conversation with, Mrs. Brantley. And if you don't mind, I'm just going to tell everybody, you just celebrated your 94th birthday, so.
Wow!
Our bus drivers are our eyes and ears. Y'all do more good than we can ever thank you for. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Brantley, I'm just going to suggest that you hand the gift card over to Sam. Yes. He got to give it to you. Are you crazy? At this time, we are ready for our public comment. Anyone else with a card? We want to make sure that we give any and everyone an opportunity to share with us your concerns before the board. All right, we do have one. This is general comment on the subject of discussion L3 and 4, Agenda Item E1 by Mrs. Linda Osborne. If you will come up, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Osborne. I reside at 255 Ashley Lake Drive, Melrose, Florida. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Board members, Superintendent Surrancey. I just have a couple of questions to ask concerning sort of physical responsibility. I see that on Consent Agenda E1 that you are adding a secretary to federal programs. And I was just curious as to why there's a necessity for an executive secretary and a secretary in an office of 13 or 14 people. That's just one of my concerns. I feel like the money could be spent otherwise. And then the other one has to do, I'm assuming this is not on the consent agenda, but it has to do with the discussion. And so is this a procedural that you, it says on L3 and 4, it's the same letter, but it says, "Remove from the table, request to pay tutors out of Title I funds." And then number four is request to pay tutors out of Title I funds. It's the same letter. It's the same issue that I had last time, asking for approval of the board for the 1819 school year. That school year is over and done with, so maybe I should ask a question. Were the people that were hired, were they paid?
Well, that's unfinished business.
When we discuss it, we'll, we can talk.
And I think we'll.
Well, that's, you know, okay. So I need to come back at that time or give you my ideas right now.
What do you think, Charlie? We need to handle one at a time, don't we?
As long as the chair would allow.
We can go into that.
If there's some public comment at that time, it would be permissible.
Okay.
Okay.
I think once we get there and have it explained, your question will be answered, as opposed to having another public comment at that time. We're just going to let the explanation, because I did get the explanation, and we're going to allow that to suffice this, ma'am.
Okay, but I also want to look at thorough discussion of it because if this is an audit finding, how were the people paid? And how is it coming up now? Was it chargebacks? Or how did these people, did they get paid? Did they get paid? Okay.
And we promise you that that will be addressed when we get here.
That would not be, that would not be an uncommon thing to do.
We did take care of the findings from the auditors and our, when I say our, the district's response. And this did not come up. So evidently, the auditors did not address this particular item. But when we, when we get to this, the explanation will be given.
Okay. All right, ma'am. Thank you.
All righty. You're welcome. Okay, at this time, we are ready for our consent agenda. We're going to start with you, Mrs. Pickens.
I have nothing to pull.
Mr. Buckles?
I think that Ms. Osborne has mentioned what I was concerned with, so we're okay.
Okay. All right. Mr. McInnis?
I have nothing to call.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Crawford?
F6.
Okay. If we can get a motion to approve the other items, we'll go from there, and then we will allow Mrs. Crawford.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus F6.
A second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Mr. Buckles that we approve the consent agenda minus F6, pulled by Mrs. Jane Crawford. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers? Same sign. Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Okay, Mrs. Crawford. Is anyone here? This is the fire eye email security.
Yeah, I had talked to, or emailed Thomas earlier in the week, and he said that it would be okay to have one of the guys come up and explain. That's a big chunk of money, and I just really didn't understand exactly what it does because I'm kind of technologically impaired.
No, no.
I don't think you are. I think you're very.
I'm very good at technology.
So I'm going to be handing out some papers. That's just a really quick example.
The end result would be far more than this.
So. A really quick thing about that. The total amount is actually going to be split between five years. It's actually going to be in a financing situation. Of course, the financing company is going to take a little bit of their cut, but overall, yeah, about 21. Let me be more appropriate.
Kyle, can you introduce yourself for the record?
Oh, yes. Yes, sir. I'm Kyle Williquitt. I work in the IT department, and yeah, I deal with a lot of security stuff, unfortunately.
Fortunately.
But, well, unfortunately.
Fortunately for us.
Yeah.
But yeah, so each year, it's going to be $20,000,955.31. That's split between five years, of course. But the piece of paper that I gave you, that's actually a really quick example of a threat that actually happens. It's a commonplace, even happens to personal emails. The areas where it's like a little awkward, there are these blank spots. I apologize for the audience that doesn't have a copy of this, but there are two pieces up here, and we can make copies. The areas with the blank spots, there were removed pieces due to, I guess, more privacy sake. So this is, yeah, this is pretty much an example of a threat. It's not a, you know, unfortunate type of threat, like we, the physical threat, so on and so forth, but this is more like a financial threat. This happens to everyone, no matter like what organization. The yellow underline in this piece, if you actually, after you done, get done analyzing this, it looks pretty legitimate. But the yellow underline piece, that's the only little bit of information that we can tell, unless you want to go further, is we know it's not legitimate. We know it's not from this person to this person. As we can tell, this was a principal or supposed principal trying to reach out to a member of HR to then change their banking account information to then route to somewhere else.
So would the HR people know that's what that was?
Well, there are other protections in place, but the procedure is definitely, if I remember correctly, doesn't really go through HR for changing the bank account information. That would be through a different department. Yep, finance. And as well, they have their own procedures with that, which I already looked through it, and I mean, it's a lot, it's, it doesn't include going through email. So there's that little bit in there. So yeah, the sender had a, or had the name of a person that is a principal and a name of the HR person.
Wow.
And then you can just go from there. And with, let's just see. Yeah, so quite literally, they spoofed both the to and, or well, not to, but the from email to say that it is coming from that principal. And that's a simple thing. I'm saying like this is the most bare, simple thing that you can do. Now imagine if somebody did something more advanced. And that's why I want, or we as a department want to bring something more able to help protect us against that, especially with the situation, the two school districts that arose, or problem that arose from the Panhandle, if you've heard about that. Yeah. And that's over a million dollars out of their pocket if they didn't have insurance. And we really want to prevent that, and I hope.
Yeah, it seems to me this would be money well spent.
Yes, definitely. Million dollars versus 20-odd grand a year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you're either or. You're either going to, it's a matter of time. It's either going to happen or.
Right. That's actually in the security industry, it is, it's not if, it's just when.
When.
Yes.
So this system would catch that as it comes through?
Yes, and among other things, like you know how we send like documents through email, so on and so forth? And especially with foreign organizations. When I say foreign organizations, I don't mean like actual, like outside the United States, but as in not Putnam Schools organizations. Like, could we really trust them? How do we know that they aren't already hit and then they're trying to spread? You know, just like a virus, like an actual, like human virus. You never know. So it's always best to be safe than sorry.
Okay.
And a lot of times, these people would try and see, can they get through? And once they get through, I mean, if he had gotten through.
Yeah, but what else can they abuse?
The next person, and the next person, and for him to have had actual employees of this district.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so.
And well, we can, we can also request the names of other employees, too. And with some public information of where people live, so on and so forth, that's out there.
Yes.
You never know.
Well, thank you for that.
Mr. Harvey, do you have anything to add?
I'm just here for support. Yeah, and this is, we are, we just now posting either today or tomorrow a security analyst position. And our security analysts, we don't have one right now, and Kyle's been filling in for that position. And he's also brought in, you brought in SysCloud, right? He sort of, he works SysCloud, too. And that's another thing that we're using to, you know, just make sure that our assets, our employees, our data is protected. So all this stuff costs a lot of money, but it will cost us more when we don't have it.
Over time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
That military background helps you stay on top of all this stuff.
My guys help me to stay on top.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Item F6 on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved by Mrs. Jane Crawford that we now approve Item F6 by I, email security, and second by Mr. Bud McInnis. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. At this time, we will now go out of our regular session into emergency session, additional pay for retired teacher who is tutoring. Justification, explanation, time sensitive.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the emergency item to pay the retired teacher who is tutoring.
My second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Buckles that we pay the retired teacher that has tutored, and it was second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers? Same sign. Hearing none, motion carries five zero. We're now back in our regular session.
Discussion.
All right, discussion of unfinished business. First item. Remove from the table, waive requirements of the district policy 6510 for PEN, and it's an acronym for Professional Educators Network of Florida.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve and get a second, then you can discuss, I guess.
No.
Or just to advertise it. Remove it, yeah. Remove from the table. That's what I meant. Whatever. I make a motion to remove it from the table.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Buckles that we should remove Item L1 from the table, and second by Mrs. Jane Crawford. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Okay. Item number two, waive requirements of district policy 6510 for Professional Educators Network of Florida.
Now, this was the item that Mark Modle explained to us, correct? And we were supposed to have 20?
25 minimum, 25 employees.
And they want to waive that.
And Charlie explained to us.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah. This is something that we've been working with PEN on. They came to the district with a request to have a payroll slot. Initially, we did not believe that they met all of the criteria to have a payroll slot. There was discussion between PEN and the current teachers' union here in Putnam County. Both sides had their lawyers talking to each other, and we were there trying to, you know, interpret. But all sides agree that PEN has now met the criteria required by Florida statute. It's just that the board policy required a 25-member minimum, which is not required in the statute, but it is required in the board policy. So I believe it is PEN's intention that if the board were not to agree to this waiver, that PEN would file a lawsuit to enforce it. And based on what we understand from the finance department, it would not be too burdensome to open a payroll slot for them. And it is not currently objected to by Mark and the current union.
And even if it's 15, it's fine. You know, payroll have said that they will set up that slot to make that withdraw.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion then to waive requirements of district policy 6510 for PEN of Florida.
My second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mrs. Jane Crawford that we waive the requirement of the district policy 6510 for PEN of Florida, and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Okay. Item number three. It'd be a motion to remove from the table the request to pay tutors out of the Title I funds.
Did somebody, did somebody make a motion to put it on the table? Or can I just make?
We tabled it last meeting because Mrs., I mean, yeah, Dr. Coleman wasn't here
I remember that now.
to expound on it, and we didn't want to assume anything.
Madam Chairman, I'll make, I'll make the motion that we remove from the table the request to pay tutors out of Title I funds.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Buckles that we remove from the table requests to pay tutors out of Title I funds, and second by Mrs. Jane Crawford. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers? Hearing none, motion carries five zero.
We want to let.
Now we're ready. The request to pay tutors out of Title I funds. Is Dr. Coleman here? Dr. Coleman, if you will, please come.
Okay, because Ms. Osborne may have some additional questions that we promised her she could have. I think, I think we said that. I don't remember.
Hi, good afternoon. Melissa Coleman, Director of Federal Programs and Instructional Acceleration. So I heard under public comments a question. And so I just wanted to clarify, and I apologize I was not here at last meeting. I was at a state federal conference when we had our last school board meeting. But in regards to this letter, it's a letter similar to what we've had on file in the past, and we have on file for this current school year and aligns with what our Title I application has in it, which involves personnel working after-school hours with some of our students at schools. And we did, I think there was a question about where personnel paid. Yes, anytime personnel work after hours, we had a board letter on file for those particular situations, and our finance department uses that letter to pay personnel. So that did all occur. This is just a letter that I believe is best practice for us to have on file for every year as we have done in the past and we're doing this school year. Does that answer all the questions?
Well, my question is directed to Rhonda or Finance. Does this meet what you guys need for us to have and to do?
Well, we should already have one on file. We already have it on file.
We do have individual, individual letters on file. This is just a holistic letter.
It's best practice.
It's a best practice.
We already have it on file. We're already paying people, so.
And this is just, this is just cleaning everything up a little bit?
It's just best practice.
Best practice.
And.
I don't anticipate anything new will occur with this letter.
And just for the sake of the.
From the one on five.
Excuse me, sorry. Oh, and just for the sake of the question that was asked as Mrs. Osborne was there. She was concerned about the date that was there, 2018, 2019, and were the people paid? So if you will address that for us, we would appreciate it.
Yes, personnel were paid. Absolutely, absolutely.
So those people have been taken care of. And the date itself is because it's just not a generic letter, but.
It's a best practice. Yes, we believed it was best practice.
So it will change every year? So, it will change every year?
I would have been more, that's the only way we would pay payroll. I don't know why it would be on there again.
We, we have individual schools, yes.
It's just.
See, now she, uh, when she spoke with me, she said the various schools, uh, had their own letter just in case, I guess so that they would keep up with what they're spending and make sure they are not overspending, uh, uh, what is left in their account, as opposed to doing one for the district.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
If it's a best practice, it's, it's being done because there's usually always a complaint or something filed that come behind something like this, and I think it would be better to follow the best practice and, and go ahead and adopt the recommendation. So, I understand now what's going on, uh, a little, little more. I have, I have seen this, this before, but it's been a while. So, I'd make a, unless we're, we're through discussing, I'll make a motion.
We'll, we'll make sure any more discussion, making sure, absolutely sure that, uh, financially, those people were paid.
Yes, yes.
And that Rhonda's office is saying that this is best practice, standard procedure of operation.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yes, all right. While you're here.
I'm getting, I'm getting some.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, there's one other question, um, that was asked. You may not have come in, um, her concern, the next concern, all right, the people have been paid. We understand why that date is there. The next question was a secretarial position? I don't know if that is the job.
I actually have no idea what she was talking about, to be honest with you.
I, I think we already approved that on the consent agenda, but, uh.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, I hate to, but I have no idea what she's talking about. I, there are no new secretary positions in federal programs.
That, when, when that item was, when that item was pulled, I looked, and we're not having that today. The allocations that were before today did not have a secretary for federal program.
Yeah, I, I have no idea.
I see RAN.
The general fund, uh, Title I subsidy.
RAN is there, and program evaluator is there.
But not an executive.
And not a, not a secretary, not a secretary.
I don't, I'm not aware of a secretary that is being hired.
I, I guess.
December the seventeenth, one was approved, uh, Secretary of Fund One Hundred, Project Four Oh One, twenty, ten-month secretary. That was done back in December. And that would have been an executive secretary.
In, in December, um, that particular one is an executive secretary that works with our Twenty First Century Program, and, um, that was a transfer from our Transportation Department to federal programs. Excuse me, not our, our Maintenance Department to federal programs.
Okay.
So, Ms. Odom, I, I suppose our, our question is, is there any, is there, Rhonda, is, does this meet with your approval? Of what, the, the, all right, I'm back, I'm off the allocation and back.
We already have a letter on file, so if, you know, we don't need it, but as long as.
She needs it and wants it, you don't see a problem with that. Mr. Douglas, do you see a problem?
I do not.
All right, well, my motion still stands that we accept the recommendation, uh, from the superintendent.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Mr. Buckles that we accept the rec, no, where are we?
Uh.
All right, I've gotten.
We, we.
Yeah, L four, right. Request to pay tutors out of the Title I funds. Uh, and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor, let it be known by I. I, opposers, hearing none, motion carries five zero. Okay, at this time, we will go to our discussion and input on Putnam Edge monitoring items. And they have given us a handout.
Emaeuel Swift, Principal of Putnam Edge High School. I presented, how you doing, Madam Chair?
Board members.
Um, I presented to the board just an update from the past, um, from the prior meeting where we provided an update where, um, Madam Chairwoman, you requested data, progress monitoring data on our graduating seniors, as well as an update on our cohort. So, you have that data in front of you. I provided you a growth summary report that shows the initial assessment from the first initial test that was taken, as well as the, um, last assessment, um, back in, uh, at the beginning of this month, so you'll have a comparison between, um, um, the individual data's, um, assessment points that we assessed it, as well as you have the, um, updated cohort. Uh, with more students, we're, um, happy to, um, report back. We have more students this time that are greenlit, and more to, um, be greenlit, um, in the next coming month as we, um, continue to update that report. And so, um, hopefully by the next time we meet, um, by March, we'll have a more, um, updated version with more students in the green. Um, and that's more of the students that, that are listed in the red that, um, that are not listed as inactive. Those inactive students that you see there are no longer enrolled with us, but we still keep them on our report, um, so, um, so that we are, continue to track them in the event that they show back up somewhere else.
And which color was that?
Those are the students that are in red that says inactive.
In the red?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
As well as, I did not include, because it wasn't a request, but I do want to give you, you guys a copy of our, um, mid-year projections for our, um, school grade that outlines the different categories. Over the holiday break, um, me and my team, we deep dived each individual student. Uh, we went through each component, and we, um, outlined our plan for the second half of the school year to address and meet some of the, um, expectations of getting our school back to a C or better. And so, we did that over this, um, past holiday break. And so, I'm reporting back to you what we projected that we will end up by the end of this term, with all the different, um, measures that we put in place, um, the intense support and review sessions, um, of some of the power standards that give us a bigger bang for our buck on the Algebra One, ELC, geometry, um, biology, as well as ELA for ninth and tenth graders. And so, we have a strong plan that I think that if we follow that plan with fidelity, um, in our, um, and continue to keep a collaborative culture approach in our building, I think that will meet the objectives that we set out come May.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
I have, I have a question. The students that are marked inactive, if they were to remain that way, ultimately would hurt your graduation rate?
It depends on how they were, um, dropped from our school. Most of the students that are inactive, um, are no longer with us, but they withdrew with a positive, uh, withdrawal code, and so they won't, will not impact us.
Thank you. Me, meaning some of them may have gone to another.
That mean, that, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, and that's what it means by positive code?
Yes.
As opposed to dropping out?
Meaning that they didn't drop out, they went to either, um, Florida Virtual School, Home School, um, Penn Foster, or just moved out of the area and went to a whole, entirely different school altogether.
Okay, okay. I'm trying to recall, Mr. Swift.
Mm-hmm.
We, we, we spoke during, and I'm trying to pull back to my remembrance. We talked about meeting you, meeting with the seniors and their parents to discuss where that child was, how he or she, uh, is progressing. Did you get an opportunity to?
We did, we did. Um, thank you for, um, bringing that up. We did get an opportunity to meet with several parents. Um, we had an all-call that went out about the meeting, um, and we did have parents that showed up that were concerned. It was inviting to know that they were, um, actually going to show up and really get all the information and tools. And so, it was an opportunity for us to really not only give them information pertinent to their individual child's, um, graduation requirements, but educate them as a whole, and giving them more information for their two kids, because they may have other students, um, in K twelve education that may not be in high school yet, so they are more equipped to have a better understanding when it comes to that standpoint for their other students in their household, um, that will be faced with some of the same graduation requirements.
So, every parent, um, understands that, uh, unless their child meets these goals, they're not going to get a high, standard high school diploma.
Absolutely, absolutely.
When is the next retake on the FSA?
The next one, um, I don't have that in front of me.
You know Renee? March or? March?
February.
February, okay.
For summer texts, yes.
Attendance, that's, that's another area you mentioned at our last meeting. Uh, what did you do? Uh, have you gotten that where you wanted? And what did you do to get that kind of turnaround, or right that ship?
Um, to right that ship, I mean, again, it was just taking it, I do, um, doing our due diligence with contacting the parents, again, going out into the community. Obviously, I'm not from Palaca, so I took that initiative to go out and, you know, do some old-school home visits, um, and just knock on doors and really talk to parents for those that we can't get in contact, whether it be, um, contact information not correct or incorrect on file, and so really just going out into the community and trying to meet with each individual parents. One of the good things that I have is a very strong supportive office personnel that is very good at, he's really good at contacting parents and, and holding parents accountable for getting their kids to school, um, and setting it up. And I think that, I, I think when we had to report some kids, um, to Turency, that opened, that opened up a big eye for a lot of parents too. Um, and that really gave them a, a moment to get themselves in check.
I do want to say that we're, um, having our mid-year data conversations tomorrow and Thursday, and we always invite, uh, Edge to attend that and, uh, share with our other schools, traditional high schools. And again, it's an opportunity to exchange information and, uh, you know, just to get feedback from our district staff, so you're more than welcome to attend that.
Absolutely, and so the, the document that we use, utilizing came from Jonathan, and some of the resources that we've been implementing actually came from his office. And so, they were very useful in terms of what we had already, um, started to map out and being able to put into more realistic, um, presentation. And then also go over that with our staff and professional development, and really getting them to also own that data as well, because it takes a collective will to this work to move the school forward. And so, with that being said, everyone must be on the bus, as Jim Collins would say, having the right team and the right people on the bus heading in the right direction. And so, it really took an opportunity for us coming back after the Christmas break to really analyze the data that we, um, pulled over the break and really get into the work of really making sure we're hitting these standards hard for our students.
And are you still teaching social studies?
Actually, I, I actually, yeah, it was social studies, but I was able to take a step back, um, to, um, focus more on the admin, because I noticed that it was a lot, uh, trying to do both. Um, but I'm still in there. I am still in there because I want to make sure our students do get everything that they can get, and making sure that, because I had the experience of teaching that course, making sure that they get all the content necessary to move the needle and be successful on a US, um, US Rural History Exam, I mean, US History Exam.
Are this list, are these all seniors?
Those are all seniors.
Okay, well, um, I see one of them, this is just an example, still needs nine credits to graduate, and since we're in the second semester, how are we going to do that?
Which student are you looking at, and I can probably speak to you?
I mean, we're not going to say any names.
Yeah, that's why we're saying the top.
So, so the third student?
I just, you know, there's some need nine, some need eight and a half.
Yeah, so that student is, um, taking some courses through Florida Virtual to get those, um, courses that they need, as well as doing credit recovery, absolutely.
Okay.
And so, we have our in-house credit recovery, um, to provide those service with those courses that they, um, need to make up. And so, she's really, to just speak to her a little bit, she's really doing, uh. Oh, yes, she's, um, she was our Student of the Month back in October. Um, and she really came to us this school year, um, with the desire to want to graduate and do what she needs to do. And if you look at some of her star data individually, she has tested off the charts every single time. And so, it just really speaks to the efficacy that she's willing putting forward to make sure that she does what she needs to do to be on pace to graduate.
It would probably.
Motivation, that's a difference.
Uh, Mr. Douglas, it's probably good to gather all this information back up with the student names and give it back to me.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't want this to get out.
You want to pass it here, we can, um.
Sure, I'll take it.
Superintendent Turency, are your administrators tomorrow bringing their data with them?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Swift, I would just like to say, you are always so prepared when you come here and with your information, your data, your charts, it's just very impressive.
Thank you.
I appreciate the hard work that you do.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Just, you know, hoping and praying we can get them all graduated.
We will.
Kind of tough to be the principal and take care of that, and then work with the kids at the same.
I know, I think that goes to what my wife always tell me, you just, you just, you're going to bleed until you get the end result, and I said, yes, we got to get it done. And she understands, she's a school administrator, so she understands that. Um, in our household, excellence on display is all, is always on display, no matter what. And my third grader tell you that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you staff for us, for, for their efforts. Ms. Pat, all is well?
All is well.
Okay, Happy New Year to you, you hadn't seen me. Okay. Okay, at this time, we have no new business. We are now ready for our reports, and we will start with you this time, Mrs. Crawford, and move to your left.
Well, we've had a busy couple of weeks with, um, functions and events. Um, I think all of the board members, um, were able to, um, go to the Chris Heron event. Um, he spoke about the dangers of opioid abuse, um, with all of our high school students, and there was a parent night, which, you know, the, the turnout was dismal, but, you know, if it helped one person, um, it, it, it was worth it. Um, I really would like to thank, and I don't want to leave anybody out, but I'm probably going to Putnam Community Hospital, is that the name of that hospital now?
Putnam Community Medical Center.
Putnam Community Medical Center, um, who, who was the other big one? Clay Electric, Clay Electric for, um, uh, giving the money to, uh, I think there were some other businesses that helped.
And a number of individuals.
Another individual business persons.
Number of, number of individual businessmen.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I was trying to get at. Um, helped get him here, um, and, and, uh, hopefully he'll be back next year, and those that didn't get an opportunity to witness that will see it, uh, because it is, it's life-changing. I had the opportunity to go to Rural County Days in Tallahassee last week. Ms. Pickens was also there. It was a great day, uh, I rode with Ms. Huff, that was fun. Um, it was, it was a great day, a great evening before. We gathered together with, um, the, many of the other rural counties. I don't think every rural county was there, but a lot of our neighboring counties. And, um, we got to hear from several senators and representatives and, you know, their commitment to rural, rural counties. And, uh, I was thrilled with, um, the school district's representation there, um, and it, it was a great day. I, I don't think their fried fish was as good as the Putnam County Commissioner's fried fish, but it was all right. Um, I, looking forward to Friday, we're having the, uh, District Spelling Bee again this year. Uh, I guess, uh, somebody informed me that, oh, Sharon did, it's at the County Commission Boardroom. That's always a fabulous event, if you can come by about ten o'clock, you'll see some darling kids spelling some hard words. Next week, is it next week? I'm going to Texas, um, to an Avid Conference. I was invited to go to that, and I will be actually in training, taking classes, and I'm really looking forward to that, because, um, to me, Avid, uh, it's a mover and a shaker in our school systems, and it's really doing a lot to increase our graduation rate, Avid, JFG, and, and those, um, those programs. Yesterday, the school board members, uh, and Mr. Buckles was recuperating, so he couldn't be there. But we, uh, rode in the, um, Martin Luther King Day Celebration, the parade, and it, it was just, it was a great event. I hated it, that the turnout was not what I thought it would be. It was probably because it was cold, but, uh, once you got down to the waterfront, it was beautiful. The gorgeous day. Uh, Cedric Wright, um, I believe is in the eighth grade at Jenkins Middle School. Cedric Wright, um, I believe is in the eighth grade at Jenkins Middle School, gave his two-time award-winning speech. It was amazing for FFA, his um, his speech. It, it was just wonderful. I'm gonna tell you, we've got some wonderful kids in this district and they are doing things and they're going places. Um, so it was an honor to be involved in those festivities yesterday. Later tonight, after we um, leave here, we will be going to uh, the Civic Center at the Ravine Gardens for the Teacher of the Year Celebration. That's always an exciting time uh, to, you know, time to honor our wonderful teachers and support personnel. And I'm really looking forward to that. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mrs. Crawford.
I know, I thought it might be too much.
Well, she, uh, yeah, we did do a lot. I guess in the last month, we haven't been here. But um, congratulations to Melrose for that excellent award. They do a great job there. And I just want to encourage all the schools, I know it was kind of quoted wrong in the paper, about um, attendance and the behavior, the positive behavior incentives. And our schools do a marvelous job about rewarding students with great behavior and being in attendance. And I just applaud what they do. Um, did the JFG mock interview?
Oh, I forgot about, I left that out.
That's one thing you left out. Got a chance to get to one Christmas production at IES, which was excellent, it was well-attended. And got in some Palaca basketball, Crescent City basketball, and Ram basketball, which is always exciting. Had the opportunity to be in my first expulsion hearing and there was no piece of work there, but um,
No fun.
And uh, at the Martin Luther King Day, can't say enough about uh, Mr. Cedric Wright. He wrote, what he's, his speech is unbelievable, but what he said was, it kind of resonated with me because um, he was mentioning how he grew up, and he had a great article in the paper, a feature, how he, uh, his grandmother took him around with his plants. So that's exactly what my grandmother did. So after I heard his speech, I was ready to get down and get in the dirt with my hands. It's just something, that, that bonding and that time that you have with those kind of special people. And it stays with you, because if you've been in my yard, it's been with me forever. And um, I can't throw away a plant, but um, that's it with me.
And buys dead plants and brings them back to life.
Yes, I do.
I'd like to thank Ms. Crawford for taking the time to go to the Avid Conference, because we need to be educated from our point of view, and that would be a wonderful report for you to give us.
Come back in the woods.
And Bud, I thank Bud for doing all the, man, he's the parade guy, he can get everything ready. And I missed it, but I've been to many over the years. I wanted to just mention safety and security. I saw the article in the Palaca newspaper about the handgun that was found earlier in the year. And, you know, I thought everybody knew about it, but I mean, I guess it looked like doesn't, it was old news. But, you know, that's what our people deal with every day. And that's why we need not only the, the, you see something, say something in the eyes and the people we have in the Guardian program, but you need the people like NIT that work with the, you know, picking up the snippets of what other crimes are being committed. And I'm very, very proud of uh, of what our staff done and what the superintendent's got them doing. So makes me feel, feel better. And you're never, you know, gonna be a hundred percent, but that and along with transportation, I can't say enough about Mr. Brantley, he's gone. Uh, what he's done over the years and to put himself in harm's way, but I, you know, most of our employees would do that. Whether it's taking, you know, getting between a dog and a child or running to the sound of a gunshot, that's what they're going to do. And, and I just, I, I'm so thankful that he was there to help that child. And uh, and Ms. Spell, I can't say enough about what she's done in transportation. She has brought things up a notch. She's helped people from San Mateo to Melrose to Salt Springs. And it's just, she and her staff, all you have to do is talk to Mr. Bowling and Sharon will get on the phone and she'll take care of, if she can and legally can do it, she will do it.
I saw her driving a bus one morning.
Oh, my goodness. She, she does it all. But it, it is ceremony time, it's a special time. I'm gonna try to go over for a while, but I've got a granddaughter who's having a party, birthday party tonight, so I will probably have to excuse myself. So uh, that's part of it, but I, I do salute all of our teachers. And they, they all do such a wonderful job. So with that, I'll pass it on to Ms. Pickens.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles.
Um, first, I'd really like to just say thank you to the district staff for, um, I talked to Ms. France for over forty-seven minutes today. And, you know, they never make you feel rushed when you have questions and they honor every question that you have, whether it's a, you know, something that maybe you, you should have known, but they agree, explain it to you. And I really appreciate that. Um, Rule Days was a, a really nice event. I did notice that there were not as many booths this year. Um, the quality of the booth was really good. But I know it makes me feel very good to be part of a school district that celebrates and has no shame in opening a booth and, and putting their pe, their school district out in the forefront. And I just, I think it's great. The Chamber had a, a wonderful bu, booth, but I think we're in a great positive, unique situation that the Chamber, the County, the school district are all working together. And I don't think it's that way everywhere, so um, I, I think that's a really positive thing. Also, the, the Chris Herring um, event was wonderful in Crescent City at the high school. I had, Amanda took me over and I, and introduced me to him. And I really got chill bumps, because I thought, you know, I said if just one fan, and he said, right, if just I get through to one student, and I thought, you know, that's a, you, one student changes a generation. And um, so it, it was really, and I, I can assure you that it affected more than one student at Crescent City High School. And um, also the bus drivers, I don't, you, sometimes we don't realize how important our bus drivers are and we take them for granted. And um, it was wonderful today to, to just celebrate a bus driver. They are the first people to greet our students and the last person to tell them goodbye. And um, they see their home life a lot different than we do. And um, so we need to really celebrate bus drivers and get to know them, because they'll help us get to know our students. And um, Avid, uh, the Miller Middle School had a little Avid newsletter. And one of the students, who's a very intelligent young lady, she said the, that Avid had taught her the organizational skills to really make her have a successful school career. And she, she, I mean, she made good grades, but she recognized they really have enforced the um, binder. And uh, so I, I think that's wonderful, it's well-written. Of course, she's the child of a former student, so. Um, and then I'd also like to say, um, the parrot-to-pro program, I had, uh, we had a number of students that made Dean's List. But two of my former students and also two friends that I worked with, Alyssa Babylon and Oscar Jaimez, both um, made the Dean's List. So I think that's another really successful program and something that we need to celebrate. And that, I am looking forward to the Spelling Bee. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. I too, uh, got an opportunity to attend Chris Herring's program, the former basketball player. His, he ended up a lot better than uh, one of the other former Celtics. That first-time try with drugs was Lynn Bias, and he had signed that million-dollar contract and never got an opportunity to play. I did get an opportunity to meet his mother. And after Chris Herring's event, I got an opportunity to actually talk with his uncle outside. And he said, Chris kind of got him worried there one moment, he thought he was gonna disclose some of the family's secrets. MLK Day, as always, is, is a great opportunity for our children to display uh, their talents, the festivities. The breakfast Saturday was a sellout. I was happy to see Superintendent Serency there. It was a sellout and they did recognize students in the district that are up and coming, that are uh, going be, above and beyond, uh, making it happen. Also, um, Lefara Davis gave little snippets of The Wiz, because uh, people have been hearing about it and they're saying encore, encore. And so she will be bringing it back in February. And the date, we will make sure that you get that. Congratulations to everybody in this district for your hand in uh, our graduation rate increase. And uh, Mr. Superintendent, thank you for the number thirty-seven. I read it and I get it. Yes, alright. Our district and our school board lost a veteran minister and, and Brother Dan Phillips. If you can recall, November the fifth, he did prayer here. And he knew his condition then, but he's a man that honors his word. And he came and shared that with us, so that will forever be in my heart to remember him. I got an opportunity to visit E.H. Miller, Ms. Amber's class. She has a student in there that would not let me leave until I listened to his story. He has fifteen stories uh, on Google Docs, is what he told me, he had to help me understand. But he allowed me to read the bridge that almost fell. And if you would have heard, he has chapters, it's dedicated to someone. In chapter one, when they, when they found that it was a problem, they called all the people together in that town. He had the mayor's coming and he brought in an engineer, because the engineer knew the bridge. And I'm saying, wow, this kid really has it going on. And so I want to find out how I can bring him here to share one of his stories, his original stories that he has written. Just great, just great things going on in the district. Palac, Palaca High played Crescent City, uh, what, two Fridays ago? And uh, my heart was torn because,
And your T-shirt.
And my T-shirt. I had on a T-shirt that I had especially made for the occasion with Palaca High. When I turned, you would see one school and turn, you'd see the other school, because that, that's the way it was, because I support all of our young men and what they're doing. And I know that I gotta get it done for, for uh, interlocking, to make sure that we cover. It's hard. I mean, I could not cheer for my nephew, because there were other boys out there that I knew. And so I kind of just sat there. But you ought to catch me at some of those other games, when it's not a home team. Woo, you talking about an auntie that talks trash to the official.
Coaches, coaches like, coaches like Ms. Pickens used to give me a hard time. If I had a different kind of jersey on or shirt.
Mr. Modle, thank you for representing us and Palaca Daily News for the great article you did on our Educators' Day in Tallahassee. And finally, last but not least, on uh, January the sixteenth uh, of this year, my sorority turned one hundred years old and uh, they celebrate it, but I will be celebrating with them this June. And the reason I mention that is because we are a service sorority. We serve our community. We gave out last year four scholarships to the four high schools and one in Duval County, because our president is from there. We go to Solaris, Crestwood and Lakeview in, in um, Crescent City. And we give out cards and little care packets. We tutor a group of young ladies the second and fourth Thursday of every month at uh, Mellon uh, Elementary School and at Middleton Bernie. And so uh, we're a hundred years old, but we don't act like it. Alright, with that, Mr. Attorney?
Everything is going well in the legal department.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
Just wanna, um, and I mentioned this to you before, changing the March third board meeting to March tenth. And I'm just doing that as a report item now. We'll put it on the agenda for a next meeting, but I just wanted you to check calendars. And we've already moved, we've already canceled the second meeting in March due to the spring break. So we wanted to move it to a, a date more in the middle of the month, just to give us time to deal with items. So if you just check your calendar, we'll bring that up at the next board meeting. I want to thank a few individuals. You, you were talking about the Rural Days in Tallahassee. I want to thank Renee Huff for organizing our, our table and federal programs, for all the things that you did to help us put together, you know, our display. And I thought it went very well. A lot of people came up to our tent, especially because of all the cookies we had. So that was a big hit this year and last year. So thank you for that. I think, like you said, I think we're the only school district represented there. Other counties, but we're the only school district. Want to thank Mandy Bernie, uh, and for all her time that she spent and all the work in uh, bringing Chris Herring here. She did all the legwork, all the arrangements, and she spent weeks doing that. And there's a lot of details that had to be dealt with, but thank you, Mandy, for all the time you did, and I think it went very well. Uh, want to echo the Martin Luther King Breakfast and the uh, the event that happened on Monday, but especially the breakfast. You talked about we, they recognize some of our aspiring youth coming up. And um, that was very interesting to see that, but I also want to point out the inspiring adults that they recognize. These were four young ladies who've gone through our school district, who are either doctors or lawyers and recent, not too long graduates of Palaca High School. And you know, we're really focusing on those graduates and trying to get them to come back to Putnam County.
Do you have those names?
Yeah, I've got them right here.
TK Watson.
Yeah, TK Watson, doctor.
Doctor TK.
TK Watson. Seems like she was just in middle school. Here she is, doctor. Dr. Rashonda Phillips, uh, Michaela Jones, and Dr. Brianna Appeling. So isn't that, some of those names not ring a bell? I'll pass this down. But anyway, it just gives you a good feeling that we um, we have such successful kids that are out, adults that are growing up and are really giving back to the community. Want to mention, uh, we are releasing a mentor, our novice teacher mentor video. It's part of our Inside Putnam series, actually going out tomorrow, if it's not already on the Facebook page. It's about a four to five minute, four to five-minute video. But we are interviewing uh, some of our new teachers. They actually give testimonials on how this program has helped them be more successful teachers. So I encourage you to go on there and like it and comment on it and all that. But we have a longer video that we have also produced to take to um, to recruiting fairs and that type thing. So I commend our media department and uh, Kristen Carroll, who's been behind putting all this together. I actually got her to go on the radio with me this morning and kind of plug the video, so that was pretty good. Last thing I want to say is, before the Palaca Daily News leaves, I need to tell you something. This is about you, by the way. We were notified by the Commissioner of Education that we were to nominate one of our local businesses for what is called the Commissioners Business Recognition Award. Last year, we recognized Georgia, Georgia Pacific for their helping our career in technical education. But this year, this is breaking news, just texted Mr. Michael Lindert, had not heard back from him. But we have nominated the Palaca Daily News for our business recognition award. And I'll tell you what, they have been, and I'll, all kudos to Mr. Michael Lindert and his staff, but they have gone above and beyond helping our school district. Hey, we want them to report the news as well.
Right.
But they have really stepped up. And I'll tell you what, they have done so much to promote the Chris Herring presentation as well. And nobody was more disappointed than Mr. Lindert in the turnout, because they have really gone the extra mile to make sure that was publicized. But uh, I can't thank the Palaca Daily News enough. They, they've done a lot to really support us and uh,
Does Michael even know?
I just texted him.
Oh, okay.
So I hadn't heard back, so you've heard it first.
The super, the superintendent and I have had numerous conversations about how supportive on education. Now, if it's something we don't like, they're still gonna publish it, but it's just been so pro-student and so pro what our employees are trying to do. It's just been, it's like I'm having a, another hand.
Right.
And we appreciate what you're doing.
They've been a great partner and uh, and thank you for all you've done.
Did you get the title of what you got nominated for, what the?
I have it in the recording.
Okay.
And I actually sent a copy of the letter to Mr. Lindert, so he'll have it too. And don't forget tonight, six o'clock, Teacher of the Year. So thank you all and look forward to being there.
Alright, if there's nothing else to come before the board, yeah, but we got adjourned there. Alright, this regular board meeting is officially adjourned.